People come pick up our cardboard is we're not fenced in like it's a dry day. It's a hazard sometimes I think waiting to happen when they don't come get our cardboard. Right, there's a lot of bales up there. And so I think that when it did catch on fire, it was multiplication than actually the trailer itself. But that's just an opinion of mine, not any research done on that.
Kim.
Um, of course, we are still open and willing to participate in any recycling initiatives that are brought about. We need some time to adjust it and talk about it and see if it, if it, we could adjust our manpower to do that. But right now, we're feeling like recycling is pretty good and status quo where we're at, until the trends change themselves. I think people that are recycling will recycle and can continue to keep what we have kept out of the landfill. But an increase, I don't know if that's really the right direction you want to go right at this time, just because there is nowhere for it to go any longer. Um, the other, the last question that Jeff asked is do you expect any changes to our contracts? So our contract comes due in 2022 and there will be probably an increase not to manpower because that doesn't come into it, but certainly gas and the cost of doing business will be addressed in our contract going forward. It's just getting costly to be able to, to do recycling itself.
Perfect. Can you tell me, how many hours, is it a day that the Handicap Association works in the recycling area?
Yes, we're there Monday to Friday from about nine thirty most days.
Right.
We do programming a little bit on Wednesday, but nine thirty until three fifteen, three thirty every day.
It's an amazing program. Thank you. Council Benry.
Kim, this is not a new song to me. I initiated that recycling program when I was in your position. We worked through Alberta Environment out of Calgary. We designed the program after Hannah had the closest size of community to ours and had a real good recycling program. But after a year, we found that we could not get rid of our cardboard. So when we went looking for markets, we found that we could unload them in the shingle, shingling business. They, they use them for making shingles. And so we had a good market there and yet we always carried cardboard. And the reason why we only did cardboard is because when it's in a garbage truck, it, cardboard box still inflated can take up so much room and also in your landfill. So we, we adopted the cardboard as our main recycling. But as it goes nowadays, the millennials are thinking recycling is the big thing to think, you know, we gotta stay with the environment. I'm sorry, it isn't. And the cities that are initiating this are finding what do they do with their recyclables? And so I know where you're at, but I initiated the program for that support services to those young people that, you know, so they could gain some employment and feel like they're part of the community, and they did. I don't know what to tell you. We used to ship cardboard to Spokane. I don't know if that market is still open for your cardboard or not.
Uh, yeah, we're working with progressive.
Progressive.
Progressive that finds markets for us to throw. There's just not enough time for us to, to do the research in, in that. So progressive does that part for us.
I think that was the Washington, right?
Yeah, I did believe that too.
Council Salk.
Kim, is there any better things in terms of programming for your clients to do besides recycling if we got out of some of that stuff and just hold it to the landfill rather than making a circuitous route to the landfill eventually?
I'm not sure because what I was going to add to what Council Benry said is that it's expanded our programming immensely. Now we do volunteer pickups for many businesses in the town of Carstens. We have the secondhand store, which we hope keeps out quite a bit of stuff that might go to the landfill and that we've joined with another agency in Lefford where we take clothes that go to third world countries. So I'm not exactly sure. I think when Gary and I talked about it the last, we kept bringing it up every day or so seeing where we were at. And we're feeling that wherever we're at right now is meeting the need of what we're doing. Expanding right now might not be the time to expand services and span what we, we take in, but we are, other than cardboard, which we hope will do it, they are taking our other recyclables and it's not costing us to get rid of them, other than just doing, like they're taking them, other than getting them to the places, they're taking them. So that part we are able to manage. That being said, I don't know what happens to them once they get depressive or, or we take the plastic, we take the plastic.
Uh, to a different place, but we do DBS.
DBS recycling is where we take the plastic to.
Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you, Kim, do you foresee the day when a cardboard you will only be able to get rid of if you start paying the, the outfits that try to recycle? Because some towns are in that predicament where they have to literally pay, so it's a negative income.
The whole thing about ours is that we always get compliments on the quality of our bales. So they do take that because of the quality of that bale that is ancient, but they, they do often say that that's one of the reasons that they will come and get our cardboard is that we have good quality bales. I don't know, one day I was driving to Calgary and on talk radio, there is a recycling plant in Alderside, Calgary, that is talking about the possibility of taking all recyclables, but it's just a startup right now. And of course, being outside the city of Calgary, that's their biggest challenge, I guess it is. And that horrible kaplup with the clamshell, plastic things, of course, made news all over the place and kind of put a black eye on recycling, I would say. And so going, like I said, my, my recommendation for us is that we have created programming thanks to Council Benry around recycling and based a lot of our other programming on that, right? So we do pickups, we recycle things from bargain barn into the different recyclable piles and stuff like that. So it would be a challenge if we didn't have recycling.
Perfect. Jeff, go ahead.
Just can it maybe important for council to know that while there really isn't a financial market for recyclables, there is the credit from the Waste Authority that's an important piece of your operation as well. So we may not want to throw any babies out with the bathwater because there is a revenue stream there. If you want to speak to that a little bit.
Sorry, yes, I did, it was right on my face, sorry. Is that we are paid the diversion fee from cheap mountain waste, that thirty-five dollars a ton, and that does bring income in. So even though there's no market for recyclables themselves, that diversion levy or fee that we, we, we receive is very much help to fundraising of our association.
Perfect. Thank you. Council, anybody else? We sure appreciate all the hard work that you do with our Handicap Association and everything, you and Gary, we really appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time. Gary, go ahead. Absolutely. Please.
Every weekend when we get back to work from closing on the weekend, the plastic is quite completely full, like you couldn't stuff another piece in, and yet we still have made two kind of makeshift overflow bins for, for it. And sometimes they get full too, but sometimes people don't make the connection, I don't know.
Right.
So I just want to throw that out so that you can think, well, do we need a second trailer or how to, how to deal with this?
Right.
The other thing Kim talked about, about the glass being rejected, so literally if people put brown glass in our glass, then we're not going to sort all of that, right?
No.
We're going to haul it to Lefford and they're going to tip it out and they're going to see the brown ball and that's literally all going to the landfill. So I would like to know if you think that maybe another, like take away the glass and make another plastic bin? Would it be a possibility? Anyway, it doesn't have to be answered now, it's something that you can think about, but I just wanted to.
We appreciate the information. Those are, these are things we don't know, right? So we appreciate you bringing that to the table. Council Benry.
Gary, if that's the same batcher that I used, it's a tan colored one, an old tan colored one, down, down drag push, look for the serial number right beside the motor at the back end, and sometimes you'll find the serial number stamped on the frame where the motor mounts.
We found a plate where it is, you can't read anything on it.
But there's one, I think, stamped on that framework. And if, I'll come up one of these days and shuffle back there and see if I can help you.
Council Barnes.
Yeah, I was going to say, is there not a way to, to indicate that you don't take dark glass?
Of course.
Or people just throw it in there anyway?
Yeah.
Or have a separate bin for the brown glass? I, I don't know. It's a shame to think that you would just throw that in there indiscriminately and then, you know, and then you have to throw the oil back.
Like if they don't wash out their main age or they just throw it in.
Yeah.
So I don't know. And we haven't found a solution yet for training people because we find they don't read, they don't understand the instructions.
Right.
Right, no, I did it.
And they haven't cleaned them out.
Perfect. Thank you.
My wife is absolutely meticulous about washing everything before it goes in the recycler. We do, we recycle everything, but.
We appreciate you coming.
She cleans cans, she cleans glass, everything.
And just a lot that I wanted to say is thank you for partnering with us. That makes a lot of our credibility when we're able to say that we partnered with our, our town and council in this recycling contract as we're talking to our peers and other programs. It has been a great partnership and has helped us a lot. So I just want to say thank you for that partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Drive home safe. All right, we're moving right along to the adoption of the minutes. Mayor, make a motion to adopt the minutes. All in favor? Thank you. All right, we're moving to bylaw and policies. A land sale policy, it's my understanding, good timing, Nolan Card from the town, it was my understanding you were speaking in regards to this, you and Jeff?
Yeah.
Perfect. Awesome. Jeff, thank you.
Sorry, just stolen here really quick. Okay. So you'll recall, we had some discussion a while back about, mostly we were talking about consequences if you didn't abide by the land sale policy, is really what we were talking about at the time, and some concern about enforceability of the penalties which we had inside our policy and, and in our agreement, excuse me. So Nolan's been doing quite a bit of work with Reynolds Mirth on this, with Kelsey, and they also share the concerns about the enforceability of the penalties in the agreement, and they have some suggestions that I'll have Nolan speak to because there's just kind of a couple of big themes here. But they, they will have, there will be pushback on some of their suggestions. So for example, instead of instilling a penalty of X thousands of dollars a year, we take cash upfront and take it out of, out of the cash. The question is, can I get fifty thousand dollars upfront from somebody before they turn show? Those are the kind of things to discuss. And I, I actually looked around regionally, there's been some developments in the region where they've demanded cash upfront, even as high as a million dollars in cash. So there's an industrial development in Nobleford where the village of Nobleford said unless you put a million dollars in cash in our bank account, you do not get a development permit because we don't trust, we don't want to enforce the security here and we're nervous about the development. And so they did. They put a million dollars cash down for the security, but not everyone's going to be able to access that.
Yeah.
That's difficult for me. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Nolan just to talk about some of the highlights. And in your package, I should have separated these out to two documents. If you get, actually it's nineteen pages in, that's when the policy starts. It, I wanted to go any other way, but I didn't look at it close enough. So the policy starts on page nineteen, and then the whole first nineteen pages is a lot of boilerplate on land sale agreements with some specific pieces. But it might be best we start with the agreement on page nineteen, and I'll turn it over to Nolan.
Well, there's ten years of policy, that's.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
So if you turn to that policy, policy is basically the same as we had, only it's worded differently and penalties are not able to be added as taxes to a person's role after a year. There's just a penalty instead of a tax amount. So in the first part, she's just kind of reworded a little bit, so it's more legal, I guess. And then in the B, she totally crossed out what we did in B and she wrote it in. So then we would say whether they were going to keep the land and pass a penalty over the years, that they kept it or if we were going to take it back. The penalty would be three thousand bucks if they wanted to keep the land and hadn't had to have it developed. And then if they had completed some of the stuff on the land, the penalty would be ten thousand dollars because there'd be that problem if we ended up, they ended up never finishing, we would have to take it back, then we'd have to have some money to put it back to the way it was. And then so she, we had it kind of split up in residential and commercial, and she's done the same type of thing, and she's just reworded them so that it's not a penalty that we can stick on taxes, it's just a penalty that we have to, would try to pay. She does say that it may not be able to give it to them. And she kind of does the same thing in, in commercial, she says the five thousand dollars and then ten thousand dollars if they have developed stuff on it. And then she's done the same thing in rural land too, and we've got the same type of stuff. We kept our same deposits, ten percent, and then I think it's, anyways, on a big commercial property, it's a set amount. What was the set amount of, was it ten thousand bucks?
It was ten percent.
Ten percent. Oh yeah, I mean, the residential was a thousand dollars for the deposit. So really, it's basically the same, but she just reworded it so it's more legal.
So Mayor.
I just want to understand, this is not retroactive as accepted to next council, for example. It would apply after that.
It doesn't apply to anybody else's and all the other ones that we have, we really have really two out there right now that haven't started development. And Dave's is the one that you've given, extended on. The other one is coming up in January. We had a development permit out last year just to get through, but he hasn't had any yet either. So when it comes to his land, we're probably not going to have any way to recoup anything.
Council Salk.
That was my question, Nolan, is Reynolds Mirth didn't offer a suggestion on how to address this problem with those who are reticent in getting their development?
Not in this policy, they didn't.
But did they offer you some suggestions?
In the, the purchase agreement, there is a suggestion that we take thirty thousand dollars advanced from them. When they buy the land, they have to give us a thirty thousand dollar deposit. And then every year that they're not compliant with the land sales agreement, then we would take the three thousand, twenty thousand out of that thirty thousand until it was used up.
Yeah, I get, I get that going forward, but I'm talking about the ones that were spinning our wheels with. They didn't offer you any suggestions on.
Is that we, we would not be able to assess a penalty and apply it to.
Do you believe that that would stop people from building? Do you think that would slow down the building?
I, I think if we took a big deposit, it would.
Yeah, me too.
Because most of the people that build stuff here already have trouble getting the money to even.
Build.
Get the place to start.
Right.
Yep.
Right. Council Benry.
Jeff, is it legal to apply a penalty on your tax notice? I thought tax was notice was solely for taxes.
So yes, but not all.
Okay.
So you have to be able to show that it was a, a cost incurred directly related to the land.
Oh, okay.
So it's difficult for us, so, so for example, if we went in and, actually the most recent one we had is fire department was called to a property, the property owner didn't pay the bill, we were able to assess that because it was a cost incurred related to the land.
Okay.
In this case, it's a penalty and not a cost incurred. Now, it's semantics, I get it, but we didn't incur the cost. And I think where, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but in our discussions when you've talked with Kelsey is if, if you build somebody and they didn't pay you, then frankly, litigate and get the money out of them, sue them.
We'd have to sue them.
Yes.
Like that's how civil law works. You have a contract, party B did not fulfill the contract, so you sue party B. That, that, that's the short of it, but taxes was not a, one thing, taxes is a free alternative, it doesn't cost you anything.
Right.
Doesn't cost, we don't have to hire lawyers.
Right.
So it's certainly efficient.
So if we're cleaning up a person's lot of money, clean it up, we can apply that.
Right.
We have done that.
Because you can't.
Perfect.
I guess if we put services in, we could.
Yeah, there may be portions actually that we extend service connections, but these are penalties prescribed in the development permit.
Exactly.
So along with both these policies, we also have development permits that go along with them, development agreements to say who pays for the services, who does them, and all that kind of stuff. And some of these, like in the land sales policy where she talks about getting the money in, that would be in the development agreement also.
So in that case, we wouldn't issue a permit until the money was deposited. That's what I'd say in the development agreement.
Right.
Yeah.
Council Drew.
So what you were saying though is that you think if we were to say to someone, we need twenty thousand dollars, they probably wouldn't build, it would probably stall a lot of that activity.
It depends on who it was, but we don't really get those big.
Yeah.
Like we had Allison come and they won't come again, I'm sure, that they need to own other properties and stuff. So, and all that, I mean.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Other people and so on.
Okay. All right, thanks.
We can't talk about it because it's a closed session.
Any other? Council Barnes.
I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding. If somebody comes and buys a town lot, are they not required to pay for it in full?
For last month.
Right up front?
But our, but our policy says that within a year, they have to get a development permit, and within two years, they have to have it built on there.
Right.
If they don't, then that's when we want to get some money. Like we sell a lot, we don't want this to sit there bare and the seventy-five dollars for, for the next twenty years.
Yeah.
While they get an investment.
Right.
I totally understand that.
You want taxes.
So what, if I understand what you're trying to do is you're trying to make it so that some of that money that's been paid on that lot is put into an account that if the, no?
No, above and beyond what's paid for the lot, that's a security deposit you have to put down.
They have to put more money down.
Correct.
On top of that.
We would want that, that thirty thousand dollars to pay three thousand dollars a year, which would be probably the taxes on that house.
Yeah.
Where the, until it runs out.
Until it runs out.
That's why we would take it.
Right.
We don't want to sell a piece of land to Joel Farmer and him sit on it for ten years and sell it for a hundred thousand dollars more than we sold it to him for, he's only paid us.
Have, have we had a big problem with this?
We've had it done a couple of times.
Twice in how many years? So.
I think it'd be more than twice.
When this policy was written, it was done to us.
Okay.
But it's a matter of cleaning up this policy too. We want the policy to read accurately.
Actually be able to be enforced.
Enforce it.
Right. I mean, that's.
We couldn't enforce the policy.
Exactly. That's the point of this, is we're looking at the policy, trying to clean it up, trying to make it so that we have a leg to stand on. Exactly. Perfect.
So one more question.
Go ahead, Council.
Are you concerned that if a person comes and buys, say they pay fifty thousand dollars for a town lot, are you concerned that if you're telling them you wanted a, a further deposit, that they may just walk away and back off?
They may, yeah.
I guess you find out who's really serious about building or not, right?
Right.
And, and I think it's good that you do that.
I think one of the tricks, if I might.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is that if I'm going to go build, and I might be in this very situation, so I go pay sixty thousand dollars for a lot and the town says, we need an unencumbered thirty thousand dollar deposit as well on top of price of the land, well, my mortgage isn't going to cover that. Like the bank's not going to cover that deposit, not at all, because they can't take security in that. I haven't done anything with their money. So I have to, as an individual, find unencumbered cash.
So some kind of a bridging thing, really bridging to the.
Yeah, and so that, I can see, well, from the, from my role in, in the town, I see, yeah, that makes good sense. From my role as looking at building here soon, I'm saying, boy, I'm trying to put a bunch of money down on my mortgage, but I have to keep maybe thirty thousand dollars unencumbered because my bank's not going to pay that. There's no way that's a, an approved amount they're going to pay. Now, you get it back if you meet your obligation, so that's good. But it would, it might be tricky for some who are trying to find enough of their down payment with CMHC insurance to try and get there. On a residential side, it would concern me a bit about being a little bit honest.
The reason that we did this policy in the first place is because of two thousand and six, when we had a lot of land for sale and they went for sale cheap. And then all of a sudden, every Realtor and builder in town bought five lots or ten lots, and within a year, sold them for two to three times the money.
Or more.
Or more, yeah.
Dang.
So that's when this policy came in first, but really it was enforceable, so we had to lawyer look at, did the change seem like it made it enforceable?
Council Salk.
It seemed to me that the two lots that in question that we're having an issue with are commercial property.
Correct, right.
So perhaps we should consider the commercial aspect and be a little more, have a little more latitude with the residential part of this policy.
The, the policy does split it up in the commercial is more and the residential is quite a bit less, but maybe we could even make it to the where the residential didn't have a penalty on it and only the commercial did. That's a possibility too.
Council Barnes.
So the, the annual fee on a residential in the new policy would be ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars.
How much?
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Unless they have built the house and then they walked away and, and then within three years, we'd get, we'd get a ten thousand dollar fee and three years, we'd get it back and then we'd have to go in and clean it.
Yeah, yeah.
The only time it goes up to the ten thousand is when there's a possibility that we'll have to go in and clean it back up.
And then try to collect the ten grand?
And try to check.
Yeah.
That's right.
So the three is more palatable.
Three, three was residential and effectively five is residential, so ten percent.
But that's an annual fee, right?
Yep.
If they haven't continued to build. So it's a kind of a good faith penalty.
After the two years.
After the two years, yeah. Right.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Nolan or Jeff? Was there anything else, Nolan, you wanted to bring up?
So.
Go ahead.
Just in the, in the land sales agree, agreement, they have the either or, so you can do it either way, or.
Yes.
Take the, you know.
Sounds good.
I think Council Brown, we just need to have some discussion and it could be later down, we get back to it about what is that appetite for that higher security? Or are we going to pull the trigger and litigate as a principle on some, so we don't put a security deposit down, but we're committed to litigate if they're not met? We can look at both options.
The thing about litigation is you get a three thousand dollar penalty.
Penalty and a deposit is ridiculous.
And it might cost you over five thousand to.
To get it.
Yeah, it's only a principle move, not a financial. No question.
So would you like a poll? Do you want to?
Well, I think we can, we can just kick that around, is what, what does that look like and what would the impact be on.
Council Court.
And, and maybe you don't want to do either or. Maybe there's a possibility of putting a decent tax amount on a vacant property.
So would that happen to the county though?
So if we're polling, I personally feel that I, I don't love the idea of digging more money at a residential person. I want more homes to be built here. So I see that as a, I wouldn't, I'd be quite irritated with you that I now have to come up with twenty thousand dollars. Yes, I understand I have to, I'll get it back, but it's twenty extra thousand dollars on top of building a house. So as far as the. So, as far as the, as far as the commercial side of things go, again, I don't want it to be too crazy because I'm all about economic growth and development in Cardston, and I want businesses to come in here. However, I want them to be hungry and to build soon, and I don't, I'm not in love with the whole litigation side of things. I know how that works, and I feel like we're going to lose more than we would actually get. That's my personal opinion.
That's one of the reasons we kept the offsite levees down so low.
Right.
Because we want to encourage.
Correct.
Any amount of development we can.
Correct.
And then chase away.
Mayor.
I am wondering, the same as what you talked before, if the tax on land that is not developed should not be reviewed, because right now, people pay, what, $75 a year or something like that?
Minimum charge, $75.
So, it's extremely low. In Sterling, $750 a year, if I remember right, or around there. So, because I want incentive to build. And so maybe we need to start to look at that. Uh, we're not even in the ballpark at all. So it's maybe time we look at it a little bit differently.
Most, most of the $75 ones fall into farmland. The residential ones end up in around $400.
Okay.
Depends on the size of the lot, but it could be raised a little more to make it more incentive.
Counselor Court.
I guess one of the problems we have, when you mention farmland, is there's five acres right in the middle of a residential area, and they're not moving on it at all. So they get to sit on that land for five to 75 bucks a year. They don't care if they develop it or not, it's.
So, there is maybe need to kind of review a little bit that empty land policy.
Counselor Bengey.
Jeff, is there a timeframe when, when we need to have this in place because of extensions and stuff like that?
No, because it wouldn't be retroactive, Counselor, so.
Okay.
This is what I asked.
Yeah. One other thing, it's interesting talking about minimum tax implications is, uh, previous, and I think this Council's heard it, too, but we have a number of developers who have gone in subdivided lots, and almost exclusively, we said to them, "We'll leave your tax implication the same as if it was still raw on subdivided land until the time you transfer." So we've accommodated that for.
Years.
Year, 20 years. Saying, "Okay, Ellison, until you sell, we're going to tax it at the minimum tax implication, okay?" Atkins, same thing.
Even though it's serviced property, it should be.
Well, maybe it's not right.
Tax, oh, look, Jordan's lot, $100,000.
Once it's subdivided, then we start taxing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but when.
It wouldn't be $200, it would be a lot more than that.
So there's a lot involved in looking at tax implication, which is certainly an appropriate discussion, but there's a lot going on there.
Counselor Court.
I, I was just going to agree with you. I don't, I don't want to chase away developers.
Yeah.
We're not exactly kicking the door down, we're not Raymond or those guys that are building 30 or 40 houses a year. So we've got to be very careful with our developers, that we don't say, "Yeah, we're going to nail you to the wall before you even get a building on there."
Great.
But I think, Counselor, and it goes back to '06, is there's still an element of speculation that you need to, you need to regulate against.
Absolutely.
So we saw it on the one lot on East Hill, we, we saw where that speculation was.
Exactly right.
Someone who simply held it for no tax implication, flipped it for significant income. Right? And, and that happened all within, you know, a year. We allowed the condition to transfer, and, and yes, we were trying to work with them because there was a forthcoming development, so it's good. But, yeah, we just had some loose ends on this speculation, and we don't have much commercial land to sell anymore. The town itself is, you know, there isn't, we got 60 acres, and that's about it for us. There's no more land to be sold that's municipally owned.
Okay. Counselor Barnes.
I, I'm leaning towards what the mayor has said. I realize that Sterling has their bottom line, and I, I think we need to get somewhere closer. I don't think 500 bucks or whatever, or 700 bucks is going to break the bank for some, most people. But I think that we, we need to have a little more incentive there to.
To do something, yeah.
Well, at least recoup some of the costs of all the utility we put in the ground.
It's not a lot.
I mean, those are, those are a lot that are serviced.
Yeah.
One of them is anyways.
Okay, Jeff, does that give you?
I'm just summarizing here. So some discussion on minimum tax impacts, so. I'm going to raining instead of raising, let me fix that. Um, so we could look, if you want, we could look at comparables in the region as far as minimum tax implication, and what that does to parcels of the town, because heaven knows, we've seen a recent neighborhood the implications of the minimum tax, uh, got a little more than they thought. So the county just went through this and regressed and took it back.
Right.
Right? That just happened in this tax year.
Yeah.
So we want to look at that, although we don't have the same types of properties. It's pretty easy for us to pinpoint agriculturally assessed properties.
Yeah.
Right.
Pretty easy. And then some discussion about not requiring deposits on residential lots that the town sells. So everything in Scalville really is all we have residentially, and then we have some infill lots here and there. So not requiring potentially a cash deposit on that, but potentially looking at that on the commercial side until the development permit, um, requirements are met, and then it's refunded.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the tone I'm hearing. We can proceed with that, uh, and bring it back to.
I agree. Counselor Bengey.
Uh, Jeff, we're going to touch in our planning session, uh, number four is urban revitalization, incentives, commercial and restrictive. Maybe we, we could bring that up in that discussion there.
Yeah, we can get some of this together for that.
Good point.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else, Nolan? Thank you for your time. We appreciate you coming. All right, moving right along, 6B, remuneration policy, um, discussing the policy. All right, so, Jeff.
Um, so I, I sent an email to Counsel. This came up on topics to discuss in the planning session, and I, like with recycling, I'm trying to see if we can get some of those topics out before.
Right.
Because it isn't a textbook planning item, but still an important item nonetheless. And I also feel it's a better thing to discuss in your public community, it's a policy document. So I refreshed the comparison that you saw a year ago, just so you had some idea of where you might want to go with it. With one note, the Raymond's is still 2017s. They don't have a public 2018 financial statement yet. And so, there's a still 2017s, everybody else is 2018s, and I added a few communities just based on size and comparable, um, something to look at for context. So I don't have a recommendation on this item, uh, simply that I tried to refresh the information before you discussed it.
I appreciate that, thank you. So, as far as discussion on this policy, um, Mayor, go ahead.
I just would say that I have taken time to give you a little bit of historical background, and Counselor Court will remember that discussion in, uh, two, two councils ago.
Yeah.
And, uh, there were, we were possibly in a similar situation. I think we were in a worse situation personally, uh, from the data that were given to us in those days. So there was a significant adjustment that had been done at that point, but since then, there has been no adjustment, except for the 13% that the government caused us to lose through their policy of taking away all non-taxable portion of the, uh, remuneration of civil servants. So that was an adjustment that was done last year. From that, I kind of looked a little bit at the different issues that might be possibly, uh, need fixing in that policy, and I really honestly believe that the problem probably lies on the committees. Because if we kind of look at it from a perspective of the different committees that can have subcommittees or subboards, and then claim per di, uh, per diems, and rightly so, are very limited. There's about three of them. So, which mean that if you really look at, uh, the remuneration of the different counselors, if that is the issue, I do not know. But if it is, I can see that some counselor work harder because they're on more, uh, committees, and willingly ask to be on those committees, and were approved by this council. Therefore, yes, there is a, at the end of the day, you could say a greater remuneration, but it's earned. So if that, if there is a disparity, that's where the disparity come from. But I do not know how you adjust that. It was suggested, uh, by one on council that maybe we need to kind of look globally at what council remuneration is for committees, and divide it up equally. But to me, it doesn't recognize the fact that some work very hard at what they do, and should be reflected in the remuneration, in my opinion anyways. The other point is, the way the remuneration is done right now on committees, because we have one flat rate quarterly, that you be on four committees or on 10 committees, the one who are on 10 committees actually penalized for being on more committees, you could say so, or not advantages, have no advantage. So, I really think that council needs to have the ability to express where are we going there in a, in a matter of reference. I have kind of asked Jeff to give me a sense what was negotiated for the workers, and we can compare our work to the workers in this town, but just to have a ballpark sense. And Jeff, can you kind of tell me, was it 6% over three, six?
They're taking, uh.
2%? They're taking?
It's a consumer, it's a inflation rate.
The inflation rate.
Four, 0.5%, and a ceiling of 2.5, so no more than 2.5.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking it's 6% over three years or something, so that's two.
It depends what CPI is, we don't know yet.
Right. Okay, so that's CPI. So that's the reference we may have. Now, the, um, what Jeff provided us with in those.
Per capita?
In those per capita, it's, it's so difficult to compare ourselves to an empty or pincher creek that has linear taxes that are so high and have money floating around. It's not exactly our case. Now, what I found interesting is, if you compare us to, to Raymond in the middle table, the assessment, you would say, are pretty, pretty similar. And then there is a, a serious discrepancy. But what we do not know, we do not know, uh, what type of work each counselor is doing. What, we do not know what that amount truly represent in man hour for each counselor. We have no idea. We just know that's a flat amount, and it makes us look like we are on the bottom, uh, towards the bottom of the, uh.
Scale.
Scale. But, so, are they working on four committee? Are they on 10 committees? It seems to me that for some, some counselors, they are on many, many committees. How are they paid and compensated? I don't really know. Individually, I do not know. I just can speak globally and see that there is a discrepancy, no doubt. But, up to you, Counsel.
Discussion, Counselor Court.
Yes, when, when you're discussing the subcommittees, et cetera, et cetera, though, I'm not quite sure how it works. I know I got on council two years ago, I was assigned certain committees, and that was it. When the subcommittees came around, it seemed like it just went to whoever was working in that particular area. And yes, they should be compensated more. And I'm, I'm not in this business for the money, not, not at all. But I'm not quite sure how it gets divided up. And again, when I looked at Raymond's 2017, their counselors were anywhere between $18,000 and $36,000. Now, why there's, why the current mayor was at $18,000 and the other guy was at $36, I don't know how that gets divided up. Does he claim everything, and that's how he got paid more, or I don't know. But, um.
Okay, right now, if you are on more committees, subcommittees of your committee, we had decided as council that those counselor could claim per diem and travel expenses. And they were approved by the council.
Correct.
So that is a policy right now, but it's not reflected in the base committee, uh, amount. The $1,000 quarterly is not reflected in that. So it's only reflected as your work per se.
Counselors, anybody else have any discussion on this?
Well, I hope that everybody has something to say, because honestly, that cannot be part of a closed session. We need to be under the public eye to discuss salaries to council. There is no other place. It cannot be in a place in Edmonton where we are away from the public eye. It cannot be that way. So, have the courage to express your opinion. I really don't think there's anything there that can be offensive. We're looking at it, if there is a need for increase, just give us a sense of where you're going and what you would like to see, because how can we fix if we don't understand the problem?
So we have two, Counselor Court.
Well, just, um, I understand there's subcommittees, but there's also counselors that put in a lot of time on other things that are not even part of committees.
Like what?
Okay, and that Senate Tep out there, and I'm working with the Leg, with the Legion. There's a couple of things on my, I do that because I enjoy it. But I'm just saying, outside of committees, there's other counselors that are doing other things, so.
Counselor Drew.
So, uh, this is to Jeff, is there any way to talk with other municipalities about what their breakdown is, how they actually pay their counselors? As far as subcommittees, committees, that kind of, like, can we gather some of that information so that we, the mayor's talked about, we don't really know how that, that works? Can we?
Yeah, one of the things I brought up with Counselor Brown when we were reviewing the agenda is, we start from a, an unknown, where we're saying, well, this counselor and I should, my, my, my time is just as valuable as other counselors, which is true, we're arguing that. But we don't know how much time to put in. It could be less, could be more, I don't know. We don't know. And so we're making, we have this, well, not we, you have this debate with some of the unknown. Now, some of it's going to vary, because I know I've talked to a couple of councils in other communities, and one's on 14 committees, and one's on five.
Yes.
Sure.
But why is that? Does he get assigned those 14, or the other guy just gets five? Is the guy with five looking for more committees, but he's not getting them? I, I don't know, that's.
Yeah, yeah. So we could certainly, if there was, say, and I don't want to make it a huge number, but if there was four or five communities where we wanted to get their policies, and then follow a phone call and really understand how it's assigned, and what happens with some of those things, that could be done. It'll take some time, but, but it can be done. I just don't want to do it for 14, 15, 20 communities.
Correct. Counselor Barnes.
Yeah, um, back when we, uh, two elections ago, when I was first running, um, we had an orientation meeting here, and I asked a question of Marionette at the time, um, about remuneration policies and stuff, and, and, and I asked her if she'd done any comparisons to other communities, and I said, and I just threw out Brooks, bigger community, I know that. And I said, "Would the council here do any more work than the counselors in Brooks?" And she had said that she had talked with Martin She, uh, Martin Shields, who was the mayor, then, and his wages at the time, he was getting 50-plus thousand dollars a year as the mayor, and the counselors were 35-plus there. And I, and then she said, "Well, from what I've discussed." And I, and then she said, well, from what I've discussed with them, this council doesn't, does very similar amount of work as they do in Brooks, they just get paid at a higher rate for what they do. I've talked with the town of Carstairs three years ago, four years ago, actually, and, and I told him what we were getting for remuneration, and he just kind of shook his head. He's like, woof, you guys are not getting very much, because they pay their council quite a bit, quite a bit more money, too. They're up in that, and maybe you could check that out, Jeff, I don't know. But I thought, well, when I looked at what we are, I mean, compared to Brooks, we're about a third of what they're getting. Okay, and I see what Raymond's getting, I see what the county's getting, we're still very low, and I think we need to come close. We need to come closer to, to those communities. Because if we're doing as much work as they are, and I'm talking with Joan, Joan Harker? Joanne, is it Joan?
Joan Harker, yeah.
Yeah, and when I told her what I do, and she's saying they do about the same thing, you know, and so I'm thinking, well, if we're doing the same, why aren't we getting a similar stipend for, for the work that we get? And, and I feel that there needs to be, there needs to be some adjustment, whether it's, whether we get half what they get, or whether we get 60%, whatever, I guess that's the council have to decide it. But I think there has to be a fair remuneration, moving forward for the next councils coming up. Because I know that I've had people say, you do that for that, geez, you guys don't get paid. I've had one guy say that you shouldn't get paid at all, you know, so it's all over the place. But I don't think that's fair, either. But I think we should get paid fair, and, and I think that we need to look at the comparable communities, Raymond and Cardison, and, and the Cardison County. I think that, you know, that we're, we're every bit as valuable as they are.
Thank you, Counselor Court.
On these graphs, my eyes keep going back to the cost per capita.
Yeah.
We're substantially lower than our neighbors to the east, both McGrath and Raymond. I understand some of them are lower than us, but some of those bigger communities don't need to have as much, because they got bigger tax base.
Correct.
So I'm not, we're not being greedy by asking for anything more, because we're already below just about everybody else.
So I guess my question, sorry, if I can, I guess my question would be, just around the table, is it, is it our base that we would like to raise? Is it our, do we want everyone to be making the same exact amount, no matter how many, like the mayor said, no matter how many boards we're on? Or do we want, I guess, what, what is, what are your thoughts on that? Do we all want to get paid the same? I mean, just to be clear, I don't think anybody sitting at this table has gone into this for the money, because we wouldn't be here. Some of us take time off work to be here, and we make less. So I don't think that's the, I don't think that's what we're talking about, like Counselor Barnes said. However, we need to be reasonable. So on that, counselor, or mayor, did you have something you wanted to add?
I really think that maybe reviewing the committee remuneration might be a place to start.
Okay.
Counselor Silk. Why? And I'm gonna, okay, I'll use myself as an example, all right? When we got into this committee thing, and some of the subcommittees, and this might answer your question, Counselor Court, the golf course came up. Well, with all due respect, most people around this table can't stand the golf course. But I was on the council when we bought that, so I have a vested interest. And, and it's something that I have a strong interest in, because of economic development and because of other things. So yeah, I, I volunteered to sit on the subcommittee for the golf course. Do I get compensated for it? Not all the time. If we sit in a meeting for the golf course for three hours, you bet I'm going to put in some compensation for it. Otherwise, I just don't, I, I wanted it, I asked for it, so I don't necessarily get compensated for it. The same goes with something like the rec complex, okay? I campaigned on that. So I have a passion for it.
Yeah.
So I volunteered for that. So do I get compensated for that? Sometimes, when we're in a three or four hour meeting with factor five, and they're dragging some of this stuff up, and we're there for hours, yeah, but not all the time. And then there's other things where we make trips to Brooks, or to Duchess, to go look at their rec facilities. Do we ask for compensation for that? No. When we go to Alderside and we look at that, do we ask for compensation for that? No. And when I'm passing through, or close to Rexburg, and I want to have a conversation with Salt Lake City Express about them running a bus service here, and I happen to go there on my way home from Utah, did I put in for that? No. So there's all these other things that go into it, because we have interests in all of the other things that we're involved in. I'm sitting on South Grove. I also ran for the executive of South Grove, so I got elected on the executive of South Grove, so there's extra meetings that are involved in that.
No.
I don't know what you do.
Mayor, sorry.
So, when I go with that, mayor, what do you want me to say? Yeah, I'm sitting on a lot of committees, because I asked for it.
No. Counselor Silk, you're not, you're not understanding what I'm trying to say. What I tried to say to committees, it's not the number of committees or what you're doing. Anything that you do, you earn, you earn it, and I'm grateful for your passion and for your desire to serve. It's not what I'm trying to say. What I'm trying to say is more in line with what Counselor Barnes is trying to say, that the disparity between the towns at this time might be, the adjustment may need to be in a base rate of the quarterly. Maybe that's where we have to start to adjust, and maybe that would bring us more in line.
Sorry, Counselor Court first, and then Counselor Barnes.
Address Counselor Silk, so, I've been to Alderside with you, and a few things like that. There are interests that we have, but I, I think that if you're putting in more time, more committees, you volunteered, whatever, you probably should get more. And maybe I agree with the mayor on this, maybe it's the base pay we need to be looking at.
Okay.
And go from there.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, each of us on our committees, we have different commitments to those committees, and I like, you guys, you have your passion for yours, and I have a passion for the, for the library and those, the things, those are the things that I like. And I, I sit on three committees with the, with, with the library. And some, and most of those meetings, like, I have the town one, it's usually a short hour, but the others are always out of town, and it's an hour and a half, hour and a quarter to two hour drive there and back to get to the meetings. And then they'll sit in a, a two and a half to three hour meeting there, right? And so, so I understand where, what you're saying about, should I get remuneration? So up till now, it's no, only other than the subcommittee that I've got on, that I was approved to be on the finance committee. And, and I'm thinking, well, I work awful hard on the other two, and I understand where we're getting, so I'm thinking, too, it's not the, it's not the committee level where I'm concerned so much. It is the base pay, where I'm thinking that we need to, we need to look at.
I think, I think one of the beautiful things of this council is the fact that, when the mayor assigned us to a lot of the committees that we were put on, she took into the fact of maybe where some of our passions were. I, of course, am on many of the parks and rec, and anything to do with sports, or, I am on eight committees, nine committees right now, and I'm hopping, and I definitely am putting more time in on, on some of them, more than the others. Some of them are just a monthly meeting, and I show up and bring back to council their requests. Other meetings, I have their meeting, but then I'm painting at the Agger Dome, I'm cutting grass, I'm, so we're all, I think, the majority of the people at this table are invested, that's why we're here, we're invested in everything we do, and we have a passion for it. And so I don't think we need to feel bad about, about being, I don't feel the need to be equal with, say, Raymond or some, but I don't think we should, anyone sitting at this table should feel bad in regards to wanting our base, if that's what we're talking about, to be brought up. I think there's nobody that works harder than this council. We are a hardworking council, and we don't need to apologize for it. I, that's my personal opinion. I hope you agree.
So.
Counselor?
No.
Oh, sorry, mayor.
I, I really think, coming out of this discussion, we need a little bit of help to offer administration.
More information.
If we want something changed. So I think Counselor Drew, you asked that there be comparable, more detailed comparable with other town. I mean, maybe we want to limit where we want to look. Could we maybe say, Cardston, the county, McGrath, and Raymond, possibly?
Don't do the county.
But let's try to maybe do it with towns that have similar assessment, possibly, so that similar assent, assessment with kind of, say, the tax revenue are kind of similar.
Agreed.
And that would be probably a proper base.
Well, we have to be careful, because I, I really believe Raymond's overpriced, I think they're getting, so we have to be careful with that. I don't, I don't think we should be getting what they're getting.
That was my point.
And I think you may.
And we don't know what that is, sorry, we don't actually know what that is right now.
We kind of have an idea.
Counselor Ben-Gree, and then Counselor Barnes, thank you.
I have to agree with, with you, Counselor Brown, that we need to look maybe, possibly at the, at the base pay, because here's, here's an example. The mayor and I are now members of the Regional Assessment Review Board. And to do that, we had to go to two days of meetings of instructions and demographics, we used the town car. And then, when it was all done, I think both of us claimed two days, two full days. We didn't claim any mileage. But after that, on the Saturday morning, I'm sitting there doing my test for probably an hour and a half, two hours, and I couldn't get into Nov rent, so I phoned the mayor, and I said, mayor, have you got into Nov rent, which is the, the course?
The porto.
Yeah. And she said, yes, I use this and this and this, and I said, well, I've sat here for a half hour, trying to get into it, can't get into it. She says, I'll be right up. She was at my house for probably 20 minutes, half hour, and she'd done her errors. We never, I don't think either one of us put in for any of that time, but it was relative to the course. And I sit on Schnuck Foundation, and there is, as, as the chairman of the board, and there is a lot of work that you do as, as Schnuck Foundation, that you don't claim.
Signing checks, running here.
Yeah.
Well, it's a, that's a behind the scene, right? So the behind the scene is not factored in.
Agreed.
It's true.
It's true. Counselor Barnes.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, the, the mayor oftentimes brings up that maybe we should, you know, consider looking at our assignments, and maybe changing up. I, I have a hard time agreeing with that. I think that where we each have our passion with our groups, and I mean, I love the, the things that I'm doing. I was on the rec board, and Paula, you're doing a job that's fantastic.
Thank you.
I couldn't even begin to do the job you do, because I don't have the same vision that you do.
Thank you.
Right? And it's the same with Gary. Gary has his vision, and each one of us have a very different vision of our, of our assignments. And, and I think we all do very well at the assignments that we are. I think we're, we were situated, put in our committees properly by the mayor.
We're passionate about our.
Thank you, because I, I love the committees that I'm on, and, and they're, they're great. And I have a passion for every one of them. You know, I have this Southwest thing tomorrow. I look forward to going to every one of those meetings. There are always lots of traveling involved, because they're in there, they're in a different town all, all the time, you know, so, and I, I really enjoy that. And so I, I have a hard time seeing us reviewing the assignments that we have. If we all love the assignments we have, let us stay there and do the job. And, and that's how I feel.
Thank you, Counselor Court.
There's some assignments I, I'm happy with, but there's just some I wouldn't mind doing, too, that I don't get a chance to.
Yeah.
But I guess to wrap this kind of up, where do we go from here?
Well, essentially, that's what I was trying to say, get some comparable, and then what you need to try to figure out, is that the per diem you want to see changed, or is that the base of the committee quarterly that you want to see changed? It's one or the other. And if you want to see a change, can we also try to understand a bracket of where we want to go, so that administration can at least cast the impact? And I really honestly believe that if there's going to be a change, it needs to be on the long term. It has to be three years, because administration is obligated, and we are obligated, to guide administration toward a three-year budget. So it would make no sense to look at one year and say, we'll review that. It has to be, in my point of view, three years brings us to one year in the next council, where they have.
Then they can review it again.
They can do what, what they want afterwards. So I would really hope that this council would take a long-term vision, be mindful of the impact on a budget, because money is not elastic in this town. And yet, adjust, what needs to be adjusted if you so feel it's needed at this point. So.
Thank you, Counselor Barnes, thank you.
Yeah, I was, one of the things, it's always been kind of a mystery to me, when I look at our, the, the money that we do get paid, is how, how we've been able to justify that a council meeting is less important than a per diem at another meeting. To me, the most important work that we do is here at the council table, we're responsible for so much, and making policy, and passing bylaws, and stuff like that. And it just seems like, yeah, we get paid a per diem to go to the various meetings and stuff that we go to, and they are, they're very important, but ultimately, the meetings at this table, to me, are much more important than, than those other assignments that we get paid a per diem for. And so I've often wondered, why is it that we get paid less?
Okay.
Just a comment.
I can maybe. Thank you.
I can maybe a comment on this. If I'm right, Jeff, the idea was based on ours past at council here, not on the time you pass studying.
Yeah.
So if that is what you feel needs to be reviewed.
I don't look at it on a time basis, it's more of what the importance is of what we accomplish in that time. Because sometimes we're here for four hours, sometimes we're here for an hour, sometimes we're here for two hours. It, it varies, right?
Right, but it's based, it's based on a half day, four hours. So that's a little bit the way it was, kind of.
I, I.
That was a scale, if you're looking as to wider scale.
So Jeff, moving forward on this, do you have, do you have?
Over here.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Drew, sorry.
I just wanted to ask Jeff, in Schedule A, we have our remuneration fees for 2019.
Correct.
Is there any way to pull that from county and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
If we're looking at the remuneration part of it, and not anything else, that would be an easy thing to see how much the Reeve gets, or how much the mayor gets here or there, and council gets, so that we could kind of see where that is?
Yeah.
Just.
Jeff.
If you want to go to Counselor Barnes.
Counselor Barnes.
Just one other thing, and maybe this is petty, but I've tried to figure out why it is that employees get paid once a month, and the council gets paid every three months. I think that we should be paid monthly.
I think that's, I would say that.
Just a thought in there, I've always felt that.
I would agree with that. Jeff, so, in regards, moving forward on this idea, do you have direction? Essentially, we're asking you to go out, find out comparable areas, compare the tax base, compare meetings, all of those things, and then bring us back the information.
I have a couple summary thoughts, and then a question.
Go.
So what you just said, look at other communities, and I put Carson, Carson County, and Garth Raymond, but those within a certain percentage of assessment.
Agreed.
But that led me into, I want to ask, is there a metric that you're looking for? So is the per capita cost the metric you want to find some parity with? Or the reason I did it as a percentage of assessment is because you look at, Envy of Pinchak Creek's a perfect example.
Yeah.
Absolutely the highest in the region per capita cost.
Right.
But it's minuscule as a percentage of their assessment, because they have a half a million dollars of assessment per capita.
Right.
So their ability to pay council?
It's high.
Huge.
Eight times larger than your ability to pay council.
Correct.
So that's why I did a percentage of assessment calculation.
And Brooks is the same story.
It shows your ability to raise money, to tax. What can you tax per person? It shows your ability to raise money, to tax. What can you tax per person? And so you'll see people on that scale that their per capita costs, they might be on the eightieth percentile in one and on the tenth when you go to assessment, because they have such an ability to pay. So my question is, what is the important metric for you? What would you, if you want to be in the mix, the question is, the mix of what? How do we measure it?
Mayor?
I, I just looked at that and I was thinking, similar residential assessment is, is probably more like it when you compare us with Raymond. But in any town that has a high commercial or industrial base, we're not comparable.
No.
Because that's not where our revenue comes from, from taxes. So it has to be compared with towns that have similar mix between residential, commercial and industrial. The mill rate might be different. That we don't know.
Yeah, that's true, too.
So the follow-up on that then is, do you want to look at how that compares regionally or simply by those who have similar demographics as you? So does it matter if it's Carstairs, for example, as well?
Yeah, you just wanted to know.
Even though they're not particularly regional, but do we, do we match up well with Dinsbury? Although five hours, four hours away, we compare well with them. So is there a regional parity you want to look at, or simply assessment-based parity?
I think it's, personally, I would think it's assessment-based.
Yeah, I think so.
Just my thoughts. What about the rest of you?
Personally, I would agree with...
See, I look at our assessments higher than Raymond, yet they're three times...
Are we good?
The value.
So if we can move forward?
That that became an election issue.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
Rightly so.
So did we want to take a break now that we've?
That should be Alex walking up with some food.
So let's go ahead. Can we have somebody make a motion? Councillor Drew.
I'll make a motion, have a break for fifteen minutes?
Sure. Perfect. All in favor? Thank you.